...agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Seeing that we're all present, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, any public comments at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on the consent.
Move the consent calendar.
Anyone opposed? No, okay. And with that, I'd like to adjourn that meeting, moving right along now to...
Excuse me, Mayor.
Okay, moving right along to the green agenda for this evening. This is the Emeryville City Council's special meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everyone, again, is present. Are there any public comments at this time?
Sharon Wilshire, and I have two separate comments. One, as the Chair of the Public Art Advisory Committee, just to announce that within the last week or so, we've put out a call for the third phase of the very successful art in our Bus Shelters program. So this is one of the few competitions that's open only to artists who live or work in Emeryville. And the deadline for submission of work is September the 5th. So you can go to the city's website and find the RFP for that. And the theme is still flora and fauna, which seems to be... I think we still have some more images to come from there. And the other thing is, I just wanted to mention that over the last two weekends, we just finished the studio visits for the art exhibition. And we have had a phenomenal response this year. And we have 117 artists who are in the show. It's a 25% increase in the number of artists. I think it will be a very strong show. And even though I didn't know before what the jury might select, we will have dance and we will have poetry in addition to...
Great, good.
...visual arts. And I am taking this opportunity to send out an SOS to council members and to city staff and to anybody here or anyone who's watching. We have no home. The place that we were really had our eyes set on and were hoping for, we found out yesterday, has fallen through. And it just seems that for the, I would say, in the last 20 years, this has been the most difficult year to find a space for the show. So anywhere between 8,000 and 12,000 square feet. And Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, we're in the phone book and we're online. And I look forward to any suggestions that anybody has. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else with a public comment this evening?
Move the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, on to item number 5.1, update on citywide minimum wage. Michelle DeGuzman.
(Coughs). What happened? Okay. Oh, I don't know. Okay, there we go. I didn't realize that it would lock. Control, alt, delete on this. Where's the delete?
Oh.
Sorry, the computer wasn't locked when I left the room minutes ago. Okay. And I don't know what that... There we go. Okay, it's fine. Run away. Thank you very much. I apologize for the minor technical difficulties. Thank you, Mayor Asher and members of the Emeryville City Council. I'm Michelle DeGuzman. I'm with the Economic Development and Housing Division of the Community Development Department. I'm here to speak to you tonight about an update on a citywide minimum wage for the city of Emeryville. There are existing policies already in the city of Emeryville addressing wage. We have two. One is Measure C, which was an initiative that was passed by the voters in 2005. It does address minimum compensation for hotel employees. It's limited to that sector of the economy. And it has additional portions of it which address employer protections if there's a change of management, as well as workload parameters for room cleaners. So it's not strictly a minimum wage policy. Under this, under Measure C, the minimum compensation in 2005 was $9 per hour. And the initiative required that it be increased by the local CPI. In our case, the local CPI is the San Francisco-Oakland-San Jose Metropolitan Statistical Area CPI. So it's currently $11.08. Shortly after Measure C was passed, the city also adopted a living wage ordinance in 2006. And that applied to employees of and contractors with the city. At that time, the initial living wage was $12 per hour, also increased by the local CPI, and it currently sits at $14.03. At the time, back in 2006, when the living wage was being considered, it was being considered actually as a larger comprehensive wage policy. In light of Measure C, the living wage, and at that time, the council did look at a citywide minimum wage. And the sort of larger concept that the council was looking at was livable wages. The idea is that in the Bay Area, we have a higher cost of living than might be found under the federal minimum wage. And what are ways that could be addressed through, potentially through policy? And at that time, you know, there's different ways of looking at it. Conceptually, you could see the federal minimum wage as zero, as one, and what percentage of the, what percentage higher is our cost of living indexed to that. You could also back into it, seeing what it costs a family or a household to live here, and then back out what wage would be required in order to support your basic housing needs, you know, housing costs, transportation, childcare, food costs. The two reports that were done back in 2006 are attached to the written staff report. And this sort of summarizes the major findings as a result of those. One was that there were likely to be increased administrative costs for oversight and enforcement. The amount of costs would be dependent on the type of enforcement. If you wanted to do a proactive enforcement model, which I'll talk about a little bit later, which is what Measure C is, or if you want to have an enforcement model that would be based more on violations and complaints, which is how our living wage ordinance actually functions. At the time in 2006, there was a concern that businesses would relocate to nearby cities that would not have a citywide minimum wage. Again, this was 2006, so certainly Berkeley didn't have its minimum wage at that time, and it wasn't as widely discussed, a regional issue. Also, at the time of the 13 major employment clusters that were in Emeryville, only the hospitality sector had an average minimum wage below the self-sufficiency standard. And that was largely going to be addressed by the wage increases by, through Measure C. And also, at the, the largest component in the Bay Area that tends to drive up our overall cost of living is high housing costs. And the city has had a very aggressive affordable housing program. And one of the ways was to continue to enact that, of course, since that time, there've been, that affordable housing program was largely supported by the Redevelopment Agency. In 2006, the, with respect specifically to the citywide minimum wage, the staff recommendation was to defer consideration of the citywide minimum wage until Measure C and the living wage were in place a sufficient amount of time to determine the administrative burden of implementing those measures. However, if staff, this is again back in 2006, still wished to pursue it further, sorry, if the council wished to pursue it further, staff further recommended providing, asking council to provide some directions for parameters of a citywide minimum wage, the wage rates, business size thresholds, you know, wage rate for businesses with 25 or more employees, you know, 24 or fewer exclusions, if there were to be any, part-time, seasonal nonprofits. Also, staff recommended issuing an RFP to hire consultants who would evaluate the fiscal and economic impacts of that. Because at the time, there were very few that were in place, so there was very little known about the potential impacts of those. And also, considering it as a ballot initiative to supplant Measure C, so that there would only be one, a single enforcement of a citywide minimum wage, which is not part of the consideration here. This is just recounting the discussion that occurred in 2006. At the time, council concurred with the staff recommendation to defer consideration. It has now been eight years. And so, we looked at the time that has been spent just in, we looked at the last fiscal year. Measure C, when it was initially put in place, had quite a lot of litigation associated with it. And so, the amount of city attorney time that was related to that was unusual relative to the sort of ongoing implementation of that. So we looked at the last year where there was, there's no ongoing litigation associated with that. For the living wage ordinance, the major departments that were responsible for that are Human Resources and the City Attorney's Office. And the tasks for that are primarily updating the rates on an annual basis and putting them through our process to officially update them, as well as updating the contrast on an annual basis. It takes approximately about six hours of those two departments combined. And violations are handled on a complaint basis, and we haven't received any complaints under this. So we don't have any information as to how long it would take us to investigate. And through the duration of the living wage ordinance, we haven't had a violation. So we don't have the information on how long it takes our staff to investigate and resolve complaints. Measure C is primarily involved by the, managed by the Finance Department and the City Attorney's Office, primarily with the Finance Department. Measure C is a much more proactive measure in that the hotels have to submit payroll data and submit other information that has to be reviewed actively by our Finance Department. If anything's missing, Finance has to pursue it and field inquiries through the year, as well as issue the permits. And so that's about 20 hours, 22 hours of time. And in terms of violations, it's not complaint-based that you don't get the permit unless you meet the requirements of the ordinance. So all told, there's somewhat minimal time related to the living wage ordinance, but you know, the, this missing piece still is the violation enforcement, which we haven't had to enact. So that's what's been happening with Emeryville. Currently, there's been quite a lot of legislation and activity around minimum wages. There are several proposals at the federal level. There is currently a proposal that's meeting some opposition. At the state level, there is currently a proposal that has passed through the Senate, and it's currently in the Assembly in committee. And locally, both Oakland and San Francisco have citywide minimum wage policies that are scheduled to be on the November 2014 ballot. Approved minimum wages. At the time, in 2006, the District of Columbia, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and San Francisco were the only cities in the country that had a citywide minimum wage approved. Since that time, in 2012, San Jose also had a citywide minimum wage that was approved through ballot initiative. And recently, this year, there's been, there've been an additional, several cities that have added approval of citywide minimum wages, Berkeley, Richmond, San Diego, and Seattle. And then the last item is that Oakland, the City Council President and the Chamber of Commerce, had developed an alternative minimum wage proposal to the one that was proposed by Lift Up Oakland that's currently on the ballot. And that did not, that was not passed by the Oakland City Council. So I'm going to...
Can I ask you a quick question on that slide? Which is, the recently passed minimum wage approvals, were those done by ordinance or by vote? I assume by ordinance, since it was this year.
All of those were by ordinance, yes. And San Jose, San Francisco, I don't remember San Francisco, but San Jose was by ballot measure, by initiative. I'm not really going to talk about the numbers on this. I just sort of wanted to put this out there. I have a, I have a graph on the following page. But this table shows the specific numbers that are associated with both the past and proposed way, minimum, citywide minimum wages that I discussed. And just the green ones are ones that are the proposals. And mostly, I just have this, if you want to ask detailed questions about actual wage rates, because they made us a line graph.
Wow.
And there's a lot of the line graph, too. But I took out the federal because it's not really germane to our discussion. But just to sort of explain what's going on with this graph, the numbers that you, the lines that you see that are dashed are the proposals. And Seattle is on here. It's not in the Bay Area or even, say, in California. But the reason it's on here is because their citywide minimum wage is the highest that has been passed, and they are that pink line. Although, I should note, that is for employers that have more than 500 employees. That's more than 500 employees in the United States, so that's meant to address change, not just 500 employees in Seattle. But the one that is for less than 500 is this sort of light purply line for Seattle. So you can see they're sort of, they're sort of on the lower end, and then they spike up eventually to get to the $15. All of these that you sort of see with a gentle slope, those go up based on CPI. Ones that are like this are sort of at an odd angle, those are the ones that are being dictated by the, by either the initiative or the ballot, by the ordinance. The green here is San Francisco. San Francisco's existing is this green one right here. It marches up just by CPI. Sorry, this one here. A little shaky hand there. And then this dashed green is, is San Francisco's proposed. And this is the Oakland Lift Up proposal that's going to be on the ballot measure. And for comparison, this is Emeryville right here. This is Measure C. So that again applies only to the hotel industry. And the other one that is of interest that I was about to say, now I lost my train of thought.
Berkley's?
Berkley's, yes. Thank you. That's exactly what I was trying. So Berkeley is here. And so, they go here, and then it flattens out because their ordinance does not include a CPI escalator.
Wow.
So I don't know if they're going to adjust it later in time. But as you can see, this is the state. And typically, before the citywide minimum wages started going in, for the most part, minimum wage is adjusted by law, by ordinance. So it just sort of goes up in these lock steps. The federal minimum wage looks similar. And so, so that's sort of, and I can go through all of them, but...
Before you go on, can I just ask a couple of questions about our hotels? I believe at least two of the four are now, have been organized.
I don't know that specifically. Is that...
That's true.
That's true. And do you know what salaries they're now getting paid? Because I'd have to believe it's not the Measure C salaries that we sent.
That I don't know. I mean, I know certainly Measure C provides that if a, if they are organized pursuant to a, you know, a contract, then they're not subject to the provisions of Measure C. So, but why they would negotiate for something less than what's in Measure C?
That's what I'm saying. I'm sure it's more than this, but it'd be interesting to hear what those wages are now in those hotels, as a comparison.
And in fact, the most recently organized one, they just finished their contract, was it last week or two weeks ago, I think. So finished negotiating that. So that's the, and the Woodfin struggle has ended with a collective bargaining agreement there.
Well, I was going to say, if all four were organized, then we wouldn't have to worry about Measure C, right?
Right. Our administrative costs.
Well, it's two out of four.
Getting there.
Getting there, yeah.
Good for Emeryville.
Okay, so this is...
I can just add, for the Marriott, they've chosen, the last I knew, they've chosen to pay their workers the time and a half rate that would otherwise kick in if they had, if you followed Measure C, if you cleaned so, you know, more than so many rooms, then the time and a half rate kicks in. So that's one of the big, you know, issues with Measure C is trying to track people's time and how many square feet they clean, et cetera, et cetera. So the Marriott has chosen, we don't even want to bother having to keep track of that. We're just going to pay all of our workers the time and a half rate, which is, I believe it's around $16 an hour. I'm not sure what the report says, but it's somewhere in there. So that's what the Marriott has chosen to do, just pay them time and a half rate and not have to worry about all the documentation.
You mean at their regular hours, not for extra hours?
Correct.
The time and a half rate is $20.34. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So that concludes my summary of current and previous activities related to the citywide minimum wage. And the next steps are, staff seeks direction from the council if you wish to further evaluate the impacts of establishing a citywide minimum wage in Emeryville. If that is the case, staff will return with an analysis that includes the items that are there enumerated. I don't think you want me to read them off the slide. But also, if there are other items that you wish, we'll look at a larger scope than this, but if there's anything specific that the council, in pursuing this concept, wants staff to address, we'll certainly, we'll include that as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor Asher, could we hear from the public?
Yeah. A public comment on this item at this time.
Yeah, Ken Bukowski. I always wondered why the Department of Labor wouldn't be the enforcement arm. I mean, they're the people you complain to when you're not getting the appropriate wage. And I don't know why they wouldn't be the party in this case. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and council members. My name is Chris Daley, and I am the political director of SEIU Local 10 to 1. Also, served three terms on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. Was the main author of San Francisco's first-in-the-country Paid Sick Days ordinance, and it was a primary cosponsor of San Francisco's current minimum wage. SEIU Local 10 to 1 has been a founding member of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition. We also are a founding member of the Campaign for a Fair Economy that worked on the preparation of the minimum wage proposal, which is on the ballot in November in San Francisco. And I'm not sure if this will pick it up on the overhead, but I prepared a simpler line graph for you on regional minimum wage proposals that I think are most relevant for you here in the city of Emeryville. And I picked San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley. And so if you can see from this, you have a very robust proposal in San Francisco. It actually does have a CPI inflator on it after it hits $15 in 2018. So it does go up, and it is actually stronger than Seattle's current minimum wage law. The Lift Up Oakland proposal goes to 1225 next year, and then has a CPI increase. It also includes paid sick days, which is existing law in San Francisco. And Berkeley just falls flat. And so for my former regional government colleague, Mayor Tom Bates, who talks about a regional approach, we in SEIU, we agree with a regional approach. We just agree with a strong regional approach, and not the approach that the city of Berkeley has taken. And if I could, we have not formed the proposal yet, but the purple line there is what my vote is in our Berkeley coalition for the measure that we're going to move on the 2016 ballot, which you see tracks San Francisco is more aggressive than the Oakland proposal. And just to give you some perspective, the Richmond minimum wage, which we think has some serious shortcomings in terms of carve-outs, exemptions, complicated, different tier structures, you know, credits for healthcare, an intermediate wage, which is a bit bizarre, we were not completely satisfied with that. So we are on the street today in the city of Richmond, collecting signatures. I think we're a little more than halfway to qualifying basically the Oakland proposal in Richmond for a special election early next year in the city of Richmond. Of course, we'll be asking the Richmond City Council to go ahead and adopt that and avoid a special election. We would call on you, the leaders here in Emeryville, to follow the lead and to make sure that you don't cause complications in terms of the Oakland proposal and put forward a strong minimum wage measure.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Chris. And I'm Sean Preston with Raise the Bay, which is SEIU 10 to 1's regional effort to raise the minimum wage in the Bay Area. This is our proposal for Emeryville, and it's pretty straightforward because we think Emeryville could and should adopt the Oakland proposal. There's so much similarity to the point where you guys, I believe, co-own a mall together, that it seems like the workers should earn the same rates. As you see, our proposal, following the Emeryville proposal, has, following the Oakland proposal, has lift up the Emeryville ballot measure or legislation going to 1225 in 2015, 1258, we presume in 2016, because it follows CPI after that. So you can see, it goes to 1292 and 1327. Couple of other important points about this. One, we strongly feel that because this is a moral issue, an issue of human rights, an issue of poverty, there should be no exemptions. There's no work that deserves to be paid less than the minimum wage. There's no worker who should be carved out, who should be exempted, who should be paid less than folks down the street. Secondly, we believe that CPI is imperative to make this progressive legislation, moral legislation forever, not just for a couple of years, until inflation catches up. Third, we strongly believe that paid sick days are, must be part of any minimum wage proposal. The idea that we would have food service workers ill, going to work while serving food to customers is just kind of gross. Moreover, we know that on, you know, just trying to make it in our high-cost, our high-cost economy out here, workers go to work sick, workers go to work with their kids sick. This is a moral failing that we should be correcting. So at the end of the day, we think it's fair to workers, fair to businesses, and good for Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I'm remembering back in 2006, when the E-Base, so the East Bay Alliance for Sustainable Economy, came and proposed Measure C. I remember it was three to two on the council. There are two council members that supported the Measure C living wage for hotel workers, and then three were against it. I remember the two that were in favor were Councilmember John Fricki and Councilwoman Ruth Atkins were in favor of it. And the three that were against it were pretty radically against it. That was Councilmember Davis, Nora Davis. Councilmember Ken Bukowski was against it, as was Councilmember Dick Cassis. I remember Councilmember Davis telling those of us that came and spoke in favor of it, she called us dupes for E-Base, which I thought was not well-advised. I didn't appreciate being called a dupe. As it turns out, the people of Emeryville, I guess, were the majority of dupes here in town, because it passed swimmingly, as you remember, very well, very popular among the people in Emeryville, just not here in the council chambers. Moving ahead here now, I listened to the two gentlemen, Mr. Daley speak and the other gentleman, and I got to say, I agree. And I think what we should do before we move forward on this is we need to get more advice. And I think you should solicit the advice of the E-Base, since they were instrumental in writing the living wage ordinance that we do have, the Measure C. And so I think we should solicit their advice, and I'm sure it's along the lines of the Lift Up Emeryville. I wanted to piggyback about the fast food. Emeryville, this council has approved just a plethora of fast food here in Emeryville. I mean, that's, we're, I mean, arguably a fast food alley here. We have a lot of fast food that this town, this council has okayed. And it is sort of incumbent upon us now to protect the public by making sure that the fast food workers get sick pay, and so they don't, you know, it's a public safety, public health and safety issue. But I think we should reject the Tom Bates model, and we should go for the regional approach, and we should go for a more, a more moral model, and we should follow our neighbors in San Francisco and what sounds like is happening in Oakland. So I invite you to, I think you should solicit the advice of E-Base and have them come and make a presentation. That's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And then we'll be hearing from Bob Cantor next, telling us why the whole town will crash if we do this. Bob?
Anyone next?
Hi, before I start, what's the process for handing handout?
The city clerk, please.
Okay. I have six, one for each council member and one for you for record-keeping purposes. Hello, honorable city council members of Emeryville. My name is Matthew Lewis, and I am the Local Affairs Director from the Associate Students of the University of California. of the University of California. And we're here to speak in favor of a strong minimum wage. So as a lot of people have recently spoken, what happened in Berkeley was we didn't get the strongest minimum wage that we want, and it was like a lot of stuff went really bad, and like we didn't get a CPI, which is going to mean, as you saw, that wages will stay flat. And a lot of students were, both shop and work in Emeryville, which means that they, that this measure will direct, have a direct impact on the welfare of a lot of students. And so we, and so therefore, we think it's really important that you, that you do a strong minimum wage. Additionally, we want to point out that because the city of Berkeley is so small that we can't do all of our shopping needs, and so a lot of students go into Oakland and to Emeryville. And so we kind of want to issue a challenge to the city of Emeryville, which is that, as you saw, Oakland did a much higher minimum wage than Berkeley did. And so what our challenge is, is that if you will pass a strong minimum wage, we will work to make sure that each incoming first year and incoming grads as soon as well, they have, normally they would figure out on their own Oakland is where their shopping needs are, and then they maybe have that, it's where they go for four years, or Emeryville is. And so if Emeryville passes a strong minimum wage, we're going to work to make sure that students are being taught, when they're coming in, that Emeryville is where like the best needs meet your shopping stuff is, like that's where Staples is, for example. And so that's our, essentially, our, is like, that's where I've gone generally for, sometimes for Staples and the store. And then I since realized there was a closer one, but, but that's definitely where I go for Best Buy, for example. And so that's our challenge. And essentially, the stronger minimum wage that you pass, the stronger going to work for that. But it's kind of the same, on the flip side as well, if it's, if Oakland passes a stronger, has a stronger minimum wage, we're kind of going to feel we want our students shopping there. But at the same time, I think Emeryville, because this is something, it's not going for the ballot, the, on the ballot, like you have an option to pass a strong minimum wage, and we really want to work with Emeryville. Like Emeryville has things that Oakland doesn't have, like it has a nice bus system that is provided by the, by the business association. That's one of the first things I noticed. And so we really do want to be, Emeryville to be a partner in this, and that's why we really want to be able to do that, because Emeryville is primarily for us as students where we go to shop, and it's all, and so that's why we issue this challenge. We really want a strong minimum wage, and we thank you and your support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item?
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Asher and council members. Bob Cantor with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank that young man who just spoke. We love the Berkeley shoppers who come in Emeryville. I had Professor Robert Reich tell me personally that he shops in Emeryville. We love it. And as a member of the Board of Directors of the ETMA, the Emeryground Governing Body, I have advocated that we extend the Emeryground Service, this is just me speaking, nobody else, into downtown Berkeley so we can help increase the traffic from there. And I'm seriously proposing that. We had a Board of Directors meeting just yesterday at the chamber, and this issue was discussed. We did not come, we have no official position. The board did not come to any resolution, so I have no official position. However, some items were raised that I just want to share with you. One is the enforcement. Ken Bukowski mentioned maybe the State Labor Commission should enforce it. Maybe it's not a bad idea. We had another comment that I believe there's an initiative at this, in the state legislature, a bill in the legislature that would increase the minimum wage. That would be statewide. I don't know how much it is. The locals might be higher, but there's, that might be a way to go, is to have a statewide increase. And there is a bill on the legislature, or bills, that's another one. The enforcement is an issue. Michelle did a little summary of what the enforcement has been like with Measure C and the living wage ordinance, but that only applies to four hotels and contractors of the city. This would be everybody. So, and finally, who you're not hearing from, you heard from Mr. Daly and Mr. Donahue and everybody else, you're not hearing from the businesses who would have to pay this and the effect on them. You're going to. The Oakland Chamber of Commerce had an alternative measure that was considered by the Oakland City Council, but failed on a five to three vote, by the way. It did get some support. It was an alternative to that, I think it's called Lift Up or something. The Oakland Chamber did propose a higher minimum wage than the federal and the state, so it was higher, just not as high as the Lift Up one. That was, that was defeated just by a five to three vote, so it got some support on the Oakland City Council. So again, we were not in favor of or supportive of anything. We don't, the board did not come to resolution. Just want to raise these issues with you, and you're not hearing from the businesses that would have to pay the increase and what effect it would have on them, and you will be hearing that if, assuming this proceeds, which I expect is going to, you'll be hearing from that, them in the future. Thanks so much.
Anyone else on this item?
Good evening, council members. My name is Larry Bradshaw. I'm a paramedic in San Francisco, and prior to that, I worked as a paramedic in Oakland. And on occasion, we'd run backup calls in Emeryville and Berkeley when your fire service was out. And I got to witness the daily struggle of the working poor trying to survive on minimum wage, their inability to afford housing, inability to afford prescription medications, inability to afford transportation, let alone childcare, earning the niceties of life. It is a, someone said moral, I'll call it a moral crime, that someone can work full-time on the minimum wage and make less than $20,000 a year. That's, you cannot survive anywhere in this country on that, let alone the Bay Area. Our experience with the chamber, I'm glad they haven't taken a position yet, but in every, we're in touch with people all over the state who are launching minimum wage ballot measures, because the states are not acting, the federal government is not acting, so it's really becoming a municipality movement. The chamber always says, you go too far, you go too fast. They're saying that in San Diego, where the proposal's only 9:25 an hour. So whatever will be proposed, I guarantee the chamber will come up and say, wow, that's too far, that's too fast. But really, 15 is, I think we all know, is not enough to survive, but 15 is a good place to start. Let's build in the COLA, let's build in the sick days, let's build in, you know, the private right of action, if you're worried about the enforcement clause, what we have in a number of our measures throughout the Bay Area is a private right of action where employees themselves can take the employer to court for not meeting the minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? No? No? Okay. Did you want to?
Yeah.
Go ahead from counsel?
I want to say something as someone sitting here who has some longevity about our two current wage policies. And first of all, Measure C, as Michelle did mention, includes workload standards. It's not just about a wage thing, so it was a far broader measure. And I do want to correct the record that at the time, there was one candidate for city council and one city council member who supported Measure C. John Fricki had not been elected yet until after Measure C passed. So one thing about this discussion that I didn't see in any of the staff reports or in any of the SEIU materials I just got, is a justification for the numbers that are being thrown about. And I, and why this number and not that number. As a principle, I support doing something on a regional basis, and I asked the staff to prepare a little chart based on the number of people in a household and what the hourly rate would be for a full-time minimum wage earner to reach the federal poverty level. When the term minimum wage was first coined, it was to be equal to what the federal poverty level was defined as. And there are gross things, factors of the federal poverty level that don't actually take into account why, the necessities of life and what people need to live in. So that's why, and that's how the living wage movement got started, because they knew minimum wage wasn't sufficient. But I just wanted to say, to meet federal poverty guidelines for a four-person household, the hourly rate would have to be $11.47 for one full-time income earner. And the reason why the federal poverty level is important is because that's a measure that's used a lot for determining eligibility for various social welfare programs. And so for example, our, under the Affordable Care Act, aka Obamacare, the, in California, Medicaid has expanded to 138% of the federal poverty level for Medicaid eligibility. So the question, the policy question that I put before my colleagues is, do we want to try to keep people off of welfare rolls? We've all heard stories of certain large retailers whose employee, employees are on Medicaid and are on other kinds of public programs because they don't pay enough to live on. So I think that's the first policy decision, is do we want to be known as a community that keeps people self-sufficient enough that they don't need government programs? To me, that would be a really good definition of what a minimum wage is. The question of what a living wage is then only goes up from there. But I totally support the idea of raising the floor of poverty because income disparity is just an abomination in this country, and the wealth gap is just increasing. The question is, is how to do it? And do we just jump on a bandwagon of, of some numbers that are thrown out, or are they based on something? So I'd like to invite the two SEIU folks, if you want to come back up and talk about why you picked the numbers that you did, I certainly would like to, to hear that. But I think the first policy decision is, do we want to make sure we keep people out of poverty and being eligible for, for different kinds of public assistance programs? Food stamps, Medicaid are two main ones. In-home supportive services for non-medical help at home is another program that's means-tested at this point. So I think we should talk about that.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I too have a similar question, because Senator Mark Leno has a bill at $12 an hour for statewide, and if it's $12, he's from San Francisco, and I see where yours is 1225. So I mean, it seemed like it'd be really nice if that bill could, if everything could match, you're only off a quarter, you got the CPI. So what was the thought process of, here's the state at $12, and here's other people at 1225 with only a quarter?
Could you please come forward? Yes, thank you.
So I think as everyone knows, SEIU has been working with fast food workers across the country over the last year to year and a half in a campaign called a Fight for 15. And I think a year and a half ago, when the fight for 15 started, 15 was seen as pie in the sky. But what $15 was, was I believe the 19, could be off a year or two, but the 1973 minimum wage, if it had been adjusted for the cost of living. And so it became a rallying cry. You know, we wanted to move a $15-an-hour minimum wage in Oakland, but when we were crafting the measure, we didn't think that $15 was going to be supported politically. We now, we now have polling that indicates that, you know, $15, you know, stepped up like the San Francisco measure. It's very popular, and in San Francisco, the measure was, which is a step down to $15, almost no exemptions in the measure. Keep in mind that San Francisco already requires earned sick time, five days for smaller businesses, up to nine bank days for larger businesses, and a healthcare mandate called Healthy San Francisco. So there are significant requirements on employers in San Francisco that, you know, we don't see in many other places. But in San Francisco, the pathway to 15 in 2018 is now supported by Mayor Ed Lee, 11 members of the Board of Supervisors. And while the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce has not taken a position, they have, they have spoken basically in favor of that compromise measure moving forward. The reason why is because San Franciscans are ready to vote for $15 next year. I think in Berkeley, the voters there are willing to vote for $15 next year. In Oakland, it's, it's maybe closer to 50/50, and I would assume that the Emeryville electorate is similar to that in terms of 15 right now, no exceptions, Chamber of Commerce fighting it. But in some respects, 1225 was a deliberation amongst members of the Lift Up Oakland Coalition. Some of us were pushing for bigger numbers, some folks were pushing for a more graduated approach. It was, it was a compromise.
I just, I was just really interested, because that bill, I believe, passed the Senate, so it looks like it probably will become law for the state of California.
We wish.
I mean, it should be.
It did not receive the votes it needed in the Assembly to pass out. And ironically, one key vote that was not there for it was the sponsor of last year's minimum wage bill. I think that he had made some commitments around that. But I think that you'll see a new statewide minimum wage legislation. Not sure if it will be from Senator Leno or not. That probably will come up in the next session.
Good question. Go ahead.
I support what both Ruth and Kurt are talking about in terms of raising the policy to raise the, the minimum wage to a level where it takes people off the, the public programs. I think we have to take a look at that. I am not as concerned about what the state and the feds are doing, because these guys are dragging their heels, they're not looking at the future, they're not looking at what is existing now, and we're face-to-face with it. The, the young fellow who was a paramedic, when he talked about the people that he ran into and the, the really bad conditions that some people are working on. So I think we have to move ahead with that basic policy. But that being said, I think we also, as a city, we're a very, very small city. We have to be very careful about how this is administered and pursued. And we, we already have Measure C, and we have the living wage. I'd like to see us take a look at, is there a way we can eliminate all the different ones and have one minimum wage that would encompass everything? To do that, we'd have to go back to the voters, because Measure C was voted on. But I, I think there's a, that there should be a strong push there. I understand, Ruth, that Measure C has additional things beside, besides the minimum wage, but there may be another way to handle that. What I'm looking for is to raise the minimum wage, to get, get that moving forward, but to be very, very careful about the demands that it puts on this city in terms of creating a bureaucracy to administer it. We've had pretty good fortune with the, the living wage, because it's complaint-driven, and I would hope when staff comes back, they would give us some real meat behind that idea.
Yeah.
And I'd like to find out more about the private right of action as well.
And then we have to find out, when can we go to the ballot? If we can get something crafted, when would be the earliest time we could go to the ballot?
But we can do it by ordinance, can't we?
Well, we could do it by ordinance, but to really consolidate Measure C, Measure C and the living wage under the minimum wage, we have to go back to the ballot.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I appreciate all the comments, actually, that I've heard from my colleagues this evening, and glad to hear enthusiasm for looking into this. I feel the same way. And to kind of go in reverse order, I'm not sure that I, I think it's important to craft a minimum wage ordinance or a ballot measure to align with Measure C. I think Measure C right now has minimal staff time, and it's specific to that industry in terms of the work standards that Ruth raised as well. So, and, and if we crafted a minimum wage ordinance that was equal to, or even higher than, it seems like it would supersede it, that we wouldn't have to take it to the ballot. I don't, I mean, staff will come back to us with more information, but I'm interested in looking at this as an ordinance of the city council as well. And I think it's, it's kind of an amazing confluence and, and moment to consider this, looking at what's going on regionally and nationally. So I would be in favor of aligning with neighboring cities and appreciate the, the comparison with Oakland and Berkeley and how different those measures are. So it's hard to align with all of them, clearly, because they don't agree. I would like to see us avoid exclusions and exceptions. I know the San Francisco ordinance does that as well. I know folks talk about the hardship on small businesses and training programs, but again, I, I see the moral imperative of where we're living and how much it costs and the importance to have a floor that everyone can live with. and the importance to have a floor that everyone can live with. It was also raised with Measure C, but others, that collective bargaining exclusion makes sense, and I would agree with that as well. The paid six days, I guess is not a part of Lift Up Oakland, as I understand it, or is it? It is. Okay. I think that's critical as well and would like to see staff analyze that for us as well. And, with the CPI adjustment, I think that's a no-brainer. I don't know why any of these would not have a CPI adjustment at this point. It seems like you're setting yourself up for the next fight there.
Right.
I don't know anything about private right of action and would like to hear more about that because I feel like the enforcement issue is the biggest one for us as a small city. And, part of the interest, I think, that Tom Bates raised with the regional measure is, let's also look regionally at the enforcement. Well, that's a great idea, but I think staff is going to have to analyze, what does that look like and how could that be implemented in a way that makes sense for Emeryville? If our goal is to take people off of public programs and public assistance, which I think is admirable, I think it's going to be a much higher wage than we're seeing in any of the neighboring jurisdictions. I don't know, you're talking about 138% of federal poverty level is eligible for Medicaid. So, it, I mean, these numbers, you know, I look at the numbers they were looking at for these minimum wages, the $12.25, and we were given a chart to compare with this Alameda County AMI and the state limits. And, I'm familiar with these from my work in terms of being eligible for affordable housing. So, extremely low, very low, and low. Well, $12.25 puts you with, I mean, off, only at extremely low. Doesn't even qualify for very low in terms of income limits. So, $12.25 is a huge step in the right direction, but it doesn't get you out of poverty in this area.
A leadership position. It's a go-along position.
Yeah.
And, that's not what Emeryville is known for.
That's right.
Yeah.
Step out.
We have a very significant portion of our base here is sales tax, which is based on retail and restaurants as well, to me, and the hotels. So, we have a significant chunk of workers in our town who work at low wages, cannot afford to live here. And, we draw workers from across the region as a result. So, I would like Emeryville to be a leader in that. And, I know that staff will, of course, give us more information on those sectors as well. But, I'm, I think this is a great opportunity for us to really take a strong position. So, I appreciate all who came tonight to speak and gave us more information. Staff did a great job pulling together information as well, but I'm pleased to have all of that as we move forward and discuss it further. Thanks.
Yes. Go ahead, Ruth.
Just to direct staff as we, this is our first night to discuss this, so we're going to be massaging this over a few meetings. But, I just wanted to let everybody know that I don't favor exemptions for nonprofits. I know Berkeley is giving nonprofit agencies a year before they have to comply. And, I don't, I don't support that because if you're not able to be in business, then you shouldn't be in business. So, you know, it's just the cost of doing business is being able to pay a living wage. So, we have very few nonprofits in this one-square-mile city. But, I don't, and many of those nonprofits are volunteer-run anyway. So, I'm not sure how much of an impact that's actually going to have on our nonprofits.
Well, and for...
Asher, if I could.
Go ahead, yeah.
I agree with what you're saying, Ruth. But, the other thing I think that is imperative is that when we have this measure come before us, that it is as clean and as simple as possible, that it's not loaded down with exceptions and differentials, things like that, kind of like the charter.
Yeah.
We're a small city. We want something clean, simple, able to administer, and to do the job with the least verbiage possible.
Right.
Does staff have good direction on this?
Do you?
We are very well-directed on this.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone who spoke on this item. We'll now move on to Item 6.1, Emeryville Center of Community Life Project. Okay. Let me get on this. Okay. All right. We are here tonight to present to you the joint occupancy agreement and the Turner Construction contract for the Emeryville Center of Community Life. So, two actions that are requested tonight from you. One is to adopt the resolution on the JOA between the Emory Unified School District and the City of Emeryville. And then, secondly, to also approve the resolution on the facilities leased and construction provisions between Emory and Turner Construction. So, just for the record, I know we have been here before and gone through the history, but just to put it all into one place here, because you're approving everything in one place, going back to 2002. And, I've been working on this project now for 13 months. I know that there are many people in this room who've been working on this for almost 13 years. Going back to 2002 with the original lease, where the city agreed to lease the portions of the secondary school for the city's rec program for the 40 years with the $1.5 million payment to the city for the use of the pool, the field, and the gym. That then went on to 2003, when the concept of the ECL was born, where the city and the district started to plan this idea of this multipurpose facility, where everything would be on the one, in the one location. Right now, there, well, there were the existing agreements. There was the MOU Number One back in January of 2010, which then morphed into MOU Number Two in April of 2011. That extended the original lease off to the year 2101 in exchange for another agreement of an additional $2.25 million. The first million of that was paid back in July of 2011, and then the remainder, the $1.25, is assumed to be, it's subsumed in the JOA that's before you tonight. So, the council packet, I believe, is almost about 600 pages. I don't want to get into it page by page. This just gives you what, just the chapter summary of the agreement.
I'm ready to stay the night.
It may be burned into some people's brains here, but I'll walk through each of these attachments at a high level. We do have representatives here from the district, from Swinerton, who is the owner's rep for the project, from Turner, and also the architects that can answer more specific questions. So, starting off with Attachment A of the agreement, this is just the property description. That's a fairly old diagram there, but it just lays out the legal description of the site and defines the property. Attachment B is the city's sublease to the district. You all approved this back last July, and this allowed the district to move forward with the abatement activities that it is finishing up now. As part of the JOA, the district will be leasing the entirety of the ECL project site to Turner Construction, and we'll get into that. Which is Attachment C. And, this begins when the sublease ends. The district will lease the majority of the site and the project to the city, except for this district office, the admin offices in the K-8 and 912 buildings. And, the reason why, and this, we've talked about this before, why the city would be leasing the majority of the site, this allows additional flexibility in the shared-use agreement. The city has less restrictive requirements to enter into leases with third parties. We're not required to offer it to a charter school before leasing. And then, I've heard this mentioned before, it also permits serving of alcohol for third-party rentals, namely wedding receptions. Attachment C, this lays out the term of the agreement. It's 66 years. It's the maximum allowable term under the state ed code. And, the city has the right to terminate the lease anytime following the fifth year. At that time, the city would be obligated to walk away from the $21 million that it has put into the project. And, any deposits that we have made into the capital replacement fund would also remain with the project. We would also be required to put the multipurpose room back into the condition that it could be than it was, I guess, in the beginning of the...
Yes, we have, we have the right to take over the multipurpose room and turn it into a standalone rec facility.
There you go.
And, if we did that, and then we terminated, we have the obligation to put it back to its original condition.
Great, thanks. Okay. Attachment D, this is the finance agreement and sets forth obligations on both the cost of the construction and then also the development and ongoing obligations of the project. The ECL project is being financed with both city and district bond funds. We have $25 million in total of former RDA bond proceeds, of which about $21 million remains to be contributed. And, this includes, as I mentioned before, the $1.25 that's remaining in the lease from MOU Two. The district issued just over $65 million in bonds through their measure, as approved through Measure J. The finance agreement calls out what project costs are eligible or non-eligible. I won't get into all of those now. Goes through in detail the disbursement of the funds, specifically the successor agency bond funds, and then has very specific limitations on the city and district funding obligations. The governance agreement is Attachment E. This lays out the governance committee, which consists of the City Council and the five school board members, the administrative committee, which is the school superintendent and the city manager. And then, there are also two subcommittees that are described in the agreement. One is the programs subcommittee, and then the other one is the operations and maintenance subcommittee. And, the duties of each of these committees is laid out in detail, and we can answer those questions if you have them. Attachment F, this is the operations, maintenance, and shared-use attachment. By April 1st of each year, the admin committee will approve a use matrix, so how we're going to be using the facilities. Will coordinate and manage the operations, maintenance, capital replacement, and shared-use. The agreement also creates two funds. One is the operations and maintenance fund, and then there's also the capital replacement fund. The O&amp;M fund, by May 1st, the governance, the governance committee will approve what's called the O&amp;M percentages, meaning which proportion of the overall O&amp;M annual costs each party is going to be covering. And, by May 1st, the governance committee will also make a budgetary recommendation to the City Council. Ultimately, the council will be adopting that as part of the annual budget process. Each party will deposit a 12th of its share into the O&amp;M budget, and the responsibility for maintaining the account is called out to initially be with the district, but we can always change that as we go along if necessary. Lastly, the capital replacement fund. We've developed in conjunction with MAC5 a 50-year, estimated 50-year capital replacement schedule and looked at amortizing that over time. Each party will be required to make annual contributions into that fund, and it will ensure that there'll be funds available when we need to make major capital improvements. O&amp;M cost allocation, we've gone into this in maybe painful detail in the past. Staff, over the last, I would say, year and a half, has looked at the programming of all of the space and looked at it on a per-hour basis, you know, per day, per hour, and, you know, which party was going to be using that space, and came up with some estimates of these initial O&amp;M percentages. And, when we looked at that, we kind of took two different approaches. One was, if we just take our existing rec programs today, as they exist today, and we pick them up and we move them into the new facility, what percentage of the overall facility would that represent? And, that's, that would be about 18% of the programming space. And, then we also looked at, well, you know, the idea is that we'll be growing our program over time, and in fact, I think the 18% in the last year has probably gone up maybe even a little bit because our programming is going up faster than we even anticipated. But, we looked at, you know, the quote-unquote "maximum" programming and what that would represent, and that looks to be about 29 or 30% of the overall facility. And, which would mean that the district is responsible for, you know, between 70 to 82% of the annual costs in those two scenarios. Okay. Attachment G, this is the design and construction. This goes into detail about the construction drawings. Sets forward, you know, the enforcement of the design review and conditions of approval. The construction date is, it's supposed to be completed by June 1st of 2016. We also lay out in there a process for approval of contracts over $85,000. Everything under $85,000 will come to the city manager and the city attorney, in addition to the school district. Anything over $85,000 will come to you all, in addition to the school board. So, we have made sure that that control was in place. Attachment H is just general conditions. And then, I'll get to the Turner Construction Agreement. The total agreement, it's $58.6 million. It's a guaranteed maximum price. It does include about $2.5 million in value engineering. When the city and the district went, finally got the DSA-approved drawings and all of the information back from revised quotes from all of the subs, we had about a $3 million hole. And, so, with Swinerton, we went through a pretty lengthy value engineering process. We had three representatives from the city and three representatives from the district in order to come up with this $2.5 million, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Emory did approve both the JOA and the Turner Construction Agreement. I believe it was on Monday evening with a vote of four to zero. They had one member absent. So, like I mentioned, the value engineering process with the three stakeholders from both the district and the city, we went through in painful detail a long list of items that could possibly be removed from the Turner contract, working with the architects and Swinerton. It went through a consensus-based approach, meaning the city did have veto power over some of the items, and there were things that the district cared, you know, a lot more about. And, so, we went through this and came up, I think, with a, you know, it's always painful, but I think the $2.5 million that's in there, it was with the intention of, you know, one, preserving the programming, and then also making sure that we weren't compromising the building for the long term. The contract milestone schedule is listed in the contract. You can see there, the gym and the pool, we are going to have done by next summer. The high school, the substantial completion is supposed to be done next November with the final by the end of the year. And then, the complete project, as I mentioned before, is June 1st of 2016, but we're trying to have substantial completion in March of 16. As part of this process, the, with Swinerton and the district and city staff, we went through a great deal of due diligence on the project budget. And, it was going back through a lot of work that had been done over the years, but really trying to bring all of that into a much more conventional format and confirming all of the funding sources amounts, closing out last fiscal year, looking at all the project costs to date, how much was left over. There were a lot of revisions of cost to complete on some of the items that were outside of the Turner contract. And, we prepared, we were able to prepare a detailed tracking document, which is in a much more standard state format that the district is used to preparing. So, as part of that, this is probably a table that you've seen before. This is the total funding sources for the project, $90 million project, about $100 million. 65 million from the school bonds. There's your MOU1 and MOU2, and then the 21.2 million of the city's RDA bonds. We also have a grant, a $600,000 FEMA grant that is included in this. I will note, we did, the city did receive a housing-related parks grant of about $470,000, which we will go towards this project, but it will just supplant the, an equivalent amount of our bond funds in there. So it'll free up about $470,000 of our bond funds that you can use for other projects. This is a little bit difficult to read, but I just wanted to make the point here of just, you know, how detailed and the budget is, and, you know, the city's involvement in this. This lays out for you, the Turner contract. I will note, there's a 2.5% contingency included in that 58.6. On top of that, you'll see the third row down, there's also an additional 1.9 million that is for the overall project contingencies outside of that. The city has included its Phase 1 art requirement of about $300,000. There's another 1.2 for FFNE. You can go through some of those. Legal and professional consultants, I will share with you, this has been something the council has asked us to look at publicly, is all of the professional consultants that were included in the budget. And with Dr. Rubio coming in and looking at, taking a fresh look at this, there are several items in there that have been zeroed out, and so we were able to free up additional dollars for the project, which has been great. And then you can see just their bond issuance and other costs, which add up to the $90 This is the chart we showed you at city schools, and you will continue to see this, just, just shows the progress on the key project milestones. And you can see in there the revised dates that we have for the completion of the facility and the move-in. So as I mentioned at the top, we're just, we are looking for you to adopt the two resolutions. One is on the joint occupancy agreement between the city and the school district, and then also to approve the facility's lease and the construction provisions between Emory and Turner. And with that, we have all of the representatives here, like I mentioned, from Turner, Swinerton, the architect, the school district, and then also all of our city staff that has been working on this.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the public at this time.
Okay, well, this whole process has been like sausage-making, basically. So we have Turner Construction. Just, I want everybody to take, I want to take this opportunity to have everybody realize that Turner Construction was the single largest contributor to Measure J, which was the plebiscite whereby this whole thing got off the ground, where the, where we, the voters agreed to, to do school bond money for this project. And it's, it's sort of sad that the construction company that wound up getting the contract is the, the single largest contributor. The second largest contributor was the bond writing firm. And there was no, it was just, it was just those who stand to profit from this are, were those that funded the Measure J, which is a sad, but a sad and a telling thing. Okay, um, back last, I believe it was November, there was a, a, an epic council meeting whereby it was first revealed to, to us, the people, that, that the O&amp;M, the operating and maintenance budgets for this project were not going to, there was not, we were not going to realize the savings, instead it was going to be a huge increase. And there was guffaws and, and gasps coming from the five council members, because as everyone here will remember, we were sold operating and maintenance budget savings due to consolidation. And that was driven home very succinctly, especially during the Measure J election season, campaign season. And so we, there's rumors now that we're going to be spending much more on, on operating budget and maintenance budget, but we have never gotten accountability. We have never been told, that's never been revealed to us. What, we, we want to be able to compare apples and apples here, and we want to find out, did we get our savings that was widely advertised? And, and we just got a rumor that it's getting, we're not getting a savings, instead it's going to be a lot more. I'd like to see an accountability there. I don't, I feel creepy for the city to get into a partnership agreement with the school district, and this is, this is a government agency that, that fought us on the bike-ped path, you know, that's in our general plan. They fought us tooth and nail on that, and then they ultimately won by very kind of dubious means. I just, that's creepy to me that we would, you know, be entering into an agreement with an agency that, that behaves like that. I just, I don't think we should be rewarding that kind of behavior. In addition, this, this, these partners of ours, the school district, 73 people signed me.
Time is up.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on this item? No? Okay.
I'd like to move the resolutions.
Dr. Rubio. Let's let Dr. Rubio speak.
It's only a $90 million job.
I just want to say, again, I said something similar when I first arrived, that I was excited to be here. And I was just glancing at the preamble, which is on page 5, and the big elements here of the project, and I'm noting that item 3 of the preamble on page 5, you know, the different pieces of our, core pieces of our project about community engagement. It sounds like there's been a lot of engagement over time in different pieces, and certainly wellness. But I really am attracted to this statement around partnerships, that the parties are committed to optimizing broad community resources, resources matters in order to best serve the students, families, adults, and seniors of the Emeryville community. So, you know, I, I love that this is such a different project, in a way, because I see it as something that seniors, students, families, and parents can all look to and, and know that there are resources there for them. It really is, I think, going to be a beacon for that. So I just want to say thank you for having us tonight, and glad to be here.
I second your motion, Ruth.
Thank you. I, I'll just say, in moving these, this is a long, a long time coming, and I publicly want to thank our staff who went over this with a fine-tooth comb and spent many hours right up to the end to, to satisfy their questions. And I also want to thank Kurt Bingham, who can understand a lot of the materials that we've been given, and appreciate your expertise that you're bringing to the council in order to do that. So my motion stands, it's been seconded.
Your motion is for the joint operating.
For both resolutions.
Could we have a voice vote and take them one by one?
Can we do them separately and...
Yes, let's take them one by one. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Jennifer.
Roll call.
Yeah, I just have a few comments. I've been a somewhat cautious supporter of this project and sometimes critic, but I am pleased to move these resolutions forward this evening. And there are some reasons I want to share with the public why I feel good about it at this point, and about ECCL. The first one is what's happened over the last year, which is with our new city manager, Sabrina Landrith. She has scrutinized, and she's directed staff to be scrutinizers as well of the costs and the designs. I feel like it, it took this project to a different level where the city was more invested in it and paying attention. She insisted that city staff sit in at the meetings as equal partners with the school district, as these decisions have been hammered out. If you recall, a year ago, we were in a hurry, hurry to pass this very joint occupancy agreement that we're working on tonight. So it's interesting that we had this extra time, and I feel like it was well-used. So it increased my personal trust of the process and of the product that we will get. And secondly, it's interesting, as the economy has improved and there are kind of better projections, I guess, for both the city, we were in, my first three and a half years on the council was all about cutting, cutting, cutting things in our budget. I feel that really Emeryville deserves and that we can afford this better facility in a way that our mentality was very different in the first few years that I served. And I'm eager to see the community center come to life and really provide the services that I think we need in this town. We may not know that we need it or that it's been an absence, but I think we will surely enjoy and see the benefits of it once it's here. So I want to respond to one particular question that Brian Donahue raised this evening, which is that when we first saw the operations and maintenance agreements, I think there was a bit of a surprise that suddenly we were seeing greater costs and not a savings that we had hoped for in the combining of the school and the city's facilities. But I actually, I feel fine about that now, and I'll tell you why. Number one, I think the costs went down because we did look at them carefully and came to more realistic, I hope, realistic costs. But secondly, it, it was our staff's diligence in explaining how the programs are truly expanding and how, yes, we spend very little right now on operations and maintenance, but look what we get for it, too. It's just not good enough. And these expansions, I think, are, we are deserving of, and I think that the, the possibilities are really much bigger. So I feel okay with the operations and maintenance and the way it's been worked out between the two. I want to point out, and I'm glad that you raised the timeline, I feel like it's a little hard just with the dates, that the way they were set, but the timeline has been changed because of delays and other things, and so our, I don't know, the sign's not up there anymore saying coming fall of 2015, I don't think, but just to know that it, the, the high school anyway, won't be able to be there. It's hard to imagine a year from now that a high school would be opening there. So I think it's good to be realistic and make sure the public knows as well. I have pushed hard and hope for the best possible bicycle and pedestrian treatment around this facility. I'm not satisfied with the fact that the general plan path has not been included in this phase of the project, and I feel that Emeryville is doing a great job, actually, improving bike and ped treatments all over town, and it would be a real shame to have this, our jewel, that we've worked on so hard not include those. But I'm just hoping that either there will be additional funds as we see the economy improving, and I'm actually kind of curious how the school district feels about that. There was, Measure J allowed up to, I think, $95 million in, in bonds, and we only actually went up to 60-some million. So whether there's a possibility of seeing additional funds at some point that could really help support that facility as well, the bike-ped path. And I have one other question, really, actually I have two questions. One is for Emery Unified. I don't know if, if Dr. Rubio could answer this, but it's specifically about the Community Benefits Agreement, which is an appendix to the agreement that we're voting on this evening. And the Community Benefits Agreement spells out a number of local hire issues, provisions for the contractor to follow, as well as engaging youth in the project. And I'm curious, some of these seem to be timely in that it talks about the beginning of construction and having 11th graders who involved in the project for the two years, et cetera. I'm curious, maybe, not the school district, but someone else could answer, whether those agreements have been moving forward, if they're on track.
My name is Bob Diaz, I'm with Turner Construction. I'm the project executive, and I was here five years ago when we submitted our qualifications for this project. I'm very happy to be here tonight. With regards to the CBA, the Community Benefits Agreement, we have moved forward with that. In terms of engagement of students, Jabril Portlock, right here, has been working in our office for a year.
Great.
And actually has been working on the project, so we're very happy with that. We intend to keep that going. He's going to go off to college this year, so we'll continue to, to incorporate that, that sort of engagement. With regard to local business participation, the CBA defines a local impact area, which is a few zip codes in Berkeley and Oakland and Emeryville. In addition to that, the Green Corridor, which is the local East Bay communities. Right now, we're predicting about a 45% portion of the job goes to local businesses, which is beyond what we originally expected. So we're very happy with that.
There's also the mention of a, a meeting with the Cypress Mandela Training.
Yeah, yeah. We, our community affairs director, Lena Anaya, sits on a number of boards, including pre-employment organizations like Cypress Mandela, and we work with them quite a bit, and have helped place a lot of their people on, on jobs, on our jobs. So we'll, we'll continue to, to, with that effort.
Great, thank you. So it sounds like, and I don't know what, how that is communicated to us, except in this very...
Well, we, we will be updating the project staff monthly on local business participation. In addition, we'll be tracking local hire through a web-based system where we can track by zip code of worker. And then quarterly, we'll be producing a written report for you. But at any time during that process, if you need information, we can certainly get it to you through probably John Baker at Swinerton, who will be the, the district's project manager.
Great, thank you.
And if I may, we also are looking at what our ongoing reports are going to be to the city schools, so we can incorporate that into it.
Great, it's just nice to, to know that what we put in place is actually happening. My final question, and this may go to the folks from Swinerton, I'm not sure, but it was in one of our wherethes at the end of one of our resolutions, it mentions that we see that this is, that these are commercially, commercially reasonable rates for the area, the fees that are being charged. And I just wanted to turn to an expert on that and, and hear whether that is true. Who can answer that for me? Turner can't answer that, sorry.
Mark Cyberlich with DSK Architects, one of the Nexus firms. I'll take a sh, I'll speculate. Are you talking about, is that regarding fees, like utility fees, connection fees?
No, I think it was construction. I can pull it up again.
Oh, constructions to, oh, the fees to, to Turner.
Yes.
Well, to, we weren't in those negotiations, but I do know that the, through the serious number of meetings, which we weren't at, but I think Bob was bruised up quite a bit coming out of those, as the, as we tried to get the project back on budget. So the EE issues also, all of their soft costs with the term while used came way down. So, so I think that's what you're referring to. So, yeah.
I guess so. I, I just know that, it says that I'm supposed to know that they're commercial, they're, they're commercially reasonable rates, and I, I feel like that's beyond my expertise. So I'm assuming that staff took care of that, but I just wanted to kind of call it out.
I would just add that, it's very helpful that we have Swinerton managing this project because they're very familiar with certain percentages that are appropriate and not appropriate for things like indirect costs, including contingency. And what Swinerton did, and working with Turner, and there was some bruising, I apologize to Bob, but, but it was important for us, the district, as your partner, as well as Swinerton as our manager of the project, to make sure all costs were as tight as possible. So there were some definite requests of Turner Construction to even go a little bit beyond what I think Turner would consider is reasonable. So that, those efforts were made, and Swinerton has, I think, done a very good job appropriately, making sure that those percentages were appropriate in the beginning stages, as well as that a lot of effort was made, again, to bring those costs down, so we could do our best to not have as much value engineering needed.
Great, thank you.
Kurt, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. For somebody that's been wrong for a long time, I remember Tony's vision back about 11 years ago, and that was when we were just going through bankruptcy, and actually, one of the reasons we went through bankruptcy is because at one time, we had three schools in this town, and we couldn't afford to run three schools. And so the vision was to bring everybody together, one site, but also really, the vision was to improve the education of all the students here and the parents, everybody that lives in this town, because if you improve the education, you don't really need to worry about the minimum wage going up, because there's a correlation between education and wages. So that was always the idea, and also going back to the Wellness Center. But I, I really have to take my hat off to the whole team, because I never thought you guys could hit the number. And I, I'm in construction, I see what's going on out there. Right now, you can't find people to work. There's, if you drive through San Francisco, you see high-rise cranes. It's, it's, the, the market has never been this good, is what it is right now. It's probably the worst time ever to build this building. But to build it for what we have, and to have it being built for that money, it's, it's well, it's a job well down to all of you people out there, and I really appreciate for all... it's a job well done to all of you people out there, and I really appreciate for all your efforts that went into this job. And if you review the documents, you can see what staff has done and the whole team has done, and all the time effort that went into this. It's going to be a wonderful day, it's going to be a great place, it's going to be something that will really define Emeryville going forward. So thank you very much.
Call the question.
I have something I'd like to say first, a few comments. I want to say that the additional time that we've had to talk about and review this project has been important to me in order to think more deeply and consider the motivations of my fellow electeds, which I appreciate. Kurt spoke about the difficulty of running three school sites. Of course, that has to do with the fact that the state of California does not appropriately fund their schools. And I don't think that we should consolidate everyone onto one school site because of that. I think it's actually short-sighted. There are some things that I want to highlight out of this agreement that are important to me. I think the guaranteed max contribution from the city to understand that there is that limit to what we are going to give to this project is important, and that our city staff will be reviewing all of the contracts that are coming through. It's also very important to me that our high schoolers get a different facility. It's, the last several years in Emeryville, we've really been kind of experimenting. We've been moving the middle school around, we've been, you know, first putting it with the secondary school, and now onto the site with the elementary school. And actually, looking back into Emory's history, even during the 1970s, there was a time when the middle school was shuttered and the middle schoolers were located on the secondary school campus, on the high school campus. But again, I don't think that the solution is to consolidate everyone onto one site, and part of that has to do with the kind of ambitions we have as a city. I think we actually really want a lot of things for our students and for our community. And I fear that this space is already oversubscribed, that we've outgrown it before we've even gotten there. I also really enjoy having places for youth throughout our city. They shouldn't just be in one spot. They're part of the fabric of Emeryville. Those schools anchor neighborhoods, and so whatever uses we come up with, I hope that there's a way for youth to be able to own that space, because I don't think that they have enough dedicated space that is their own. I'm looking forward to getting the pool back. That's a priority of mine. We have very few kind of public recreation facilities, and I've heard from many constituents that they're anxious to get the pool back online. I look forward to having a library, who are one of the most well-educated cities here in the East Bay. I know that a library would be a wonderful and vibrant place for our communities, and so I'm looking forward to that. I also have difficulty with the amount of money that the city is spending on this project. It's $20 million, and I understand the need for new facilities. My children attend these schools every day, my children go to the recreation center every day, and I would like to see something better than portables as well. But I'm also responsible for thinking about the way that we spend taxpayer funds, and I think that $20 million for the privilege of renting space part-time is not good enough. The option to turn the multipurpose room into dedicated space for the community center would come at an additional cost to the city. And then we would have to, if we ever wanted to withdraw from the agreement, return it to its original state. So that would be another expense in order to get dedicated rec space for our students. I also worry about the deficit that our school district has. They have their own financial difficulties, and much of this I will lay at the feet of the state of California. And with those difficulties, I worry that we're overstretching with this project. And what that means, in the past, we've had, we've actually had a long tradition of partnership in Emeryville, in which the city steps in to help the school district. But after giving over $20 million to this project, we are not going to have that same kind of flexibility. So I hope that the school district is able to fix their structural deficit. I know it's not necessarily the school district's fault, right? This is what is set up to happen in small urban school districts. But they're going to be facing difficulties as well, and I'm worried that we're not going to be able to be the kind of backstop that we always have been in the past. And with that, again, I want to kind of finish where I began, which is the motivations of the electeds around me and hearing from them, because I believe that they're absolutely genuine in wanting a different situation for our students in Emeryville and wanting something better. And that I appreciate, and I appreciate the many, many, long hours that our staff, and I know district staff, has put into this project. It represents a lot of hard work. But when it comes down to it, and I've lost a lot of sleep over this, I cannot vote in support of the project for the reasons that I gave. And I hope that we're able to, again, find common cause and common ground in wanting better things for the youth, in particular, in our city as we move forward. And with that, I'll call the question.
So what I have is a motion on the floor by Councilmember Atkins, seconded by Councilmember Davis, and this is for 6.1.1, correct?
Yes. One at a time.
One at a time is what I-
Mike said one at a time.
What I heard, yes. Okay. So Councilmember Brinkman.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No.
Move the second resolution.
I already moved.
And you already seconded.
Can I just note for the record, the second resolution, we're going to amend the fifth whereas to reflect the correct date that the school board approved the agreement as being August 4th.
Thank you.
As amended, okay. Councilmember Brinkman.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No.
Okay.
Where's the champagne? Come on.
Top of the court.
I hear there's cake downstairs.
Ken left early. Okay, item 6.2.
Thank you, Miguel.
This is the Emeryville Proposed City Charter, or Charter City and Transfer Tax. Karen.
Yes. I have this new mouse, which is-
Who will be in two places at once.
Yes. Okay, great. So, oh, wait, wrong one, sorry. I can see for distance, or I can see closer?
So the presentation I'm about to do tonight is for the, both of the two proposed ballot measures that the city will be considering to place the November 4th ballot. They are related, but there are a set of resolutions for each of the ballot measures. So what we are asking the council to consider tonight is placing two proposed city charts, two city, sorry, two city ballot measures on the ballot, as one would be a city charter, and the other one would be a real property transfer ballot measure. So the recommended council actions are that the council adopt, really, it's four reservations, four resolutions each per measure. First resolution for each measure actually places the measure on the ballot, and this is required if the council so chooses to place one or both of the ballot measures on the ballot. The next three are optional, but in the past, these are things that the council has also directed staff to do. And the first is to set priorities for filing ballot arguments and direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis for each measure. So there are two resolutions, one for each for that. Also, resolutions providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments for each ballot measure, this is also optional. And last, resolutions releasing the rebuttal arguments for each ballot measure. And what this is, is that while the city council has the first opportunity to not just author, if they so choose, the ballot arguments, bless you, but also the rebuttal arguments, if there is any opposition measures to the arguments, they can also choose to essentially sign over the ability to do that to somebody that they specify, perhaps a community member or somebody else. This is something in the past that the council has been interested in doing. So we have resolutions for each ballot measure that would allow the council to do that, if you so choose. So for some of you, this will be repetitive, but given the kind of historic steps that the council will be considering, we've prepared kind of a presentation that will give those in the audience at home who are not completely up to date, a brief overview of what is in front of the council to consider tonight. So I'll start with the proposed city charter. So how is a city charter adopted? A city charter is adopted if a majority of voters approve of a charter in an election. The council can either draft a charter and place it on the ballot, or can charge a charter commission to do so. Also, a citizens group can initiate the drawing of a city charter through a ballot initiative by forming a charter commission. In this case, the city council directed staff to draft language and went through a process of opening up consideration of the draft language to the public for review before proceeding. A city charter can only be amended by a majority of voters, with amendments can be proposed by the council and put on the ballot, or again, through ballot initiative. And there is a different, for most ballot measures, only 10% of the registered voters have to sign the petition to put it on the ballot, but for a charter amendment, it's a higher order, and that is 15%. So reasons to adopt a city charter, and it's part of this, I'll say what a city charter is. The Emeryville right now is ruled by general law, which is that our municipal affairs, such as how to conduct elections, the form of government, the number of council members, the ability to, the restrictions on the type of tax that can be enacted, those are all governed by city law. Charter cities, like those around us, whether it be Alameda, or Albany, or Berkeley, Oakland, Piedmont, they have the ability to self-govern when it comes to those issues of municipal affairs. And so as many of the reasons that cities choose to do charters is that charter cities can address issues, conditions, or needs that cannot be met adequately by state general law, and it can also remove the restraints of general law related to public campaign financing, self-governance, and contracting, if the citizenry or the council so chooses. And it also allows the adoption of a local property transfer tax, subject to voter approval. But even with voter approval, a general law city cannot adopt a real estate property transfer tax. So the specific charter process that the Emeryville City Council has undergone to date. On March 18th, the city council directed staff to initiate the steps to place a proposed Emeryville City Charter, as well as a real property transfer tax on the November 4th ballot. On May 9th, there was a public notice of the city's intention to consider placing the city charter on the November ballot, this is a state requirement. 21 days after that, there was a, the first of two required public hearings regarding the public's thoughts regarding becoming a charter city, as well on the content of the charter itself. The July 16th, there was a second of the two required city charter public hearings. August 6th, council will be considering to take actions on whether to place both the charter city, the city charter and the transfer tax on the ballot. And then this Friday is the last date to submit resolutions for any ballot measures to the register of voters for placement on the ballot. So Emeryville's proposed city charter, which was what staff directed to be prepared by staff, and what seemed to be at least affirmed by those of the public who came and spoke at the two public hearings, is a very simple city charter. And there's several articles in the charter, but basically, the summary of Emeryville City Charter is that Emeryville City Charter provides the city council with the ability to adopt a real property transfer tax with the approval of the voter. But otherwise, the power of the city under this charter are the same powers as exist currently under general law. So for any other powers other than the city charter, charter power of being able to impose a real property transaction tax, there would have to be a city charter amendment that was approved by the voters, whether it was city council initiated or initiated by the citizens. So the proposed city charter is about two pages, and essentially, the first article just establishes what the city's name and boundaries are, which are the same as they are now. The second article describes the city charter, as I said, that it's the same essentially as, it's the same as now in terms of following general law, with the exception of relating to taxation and assessment, subject to voter approval. And essentially, that would give the city council, if the voters approved a ballot measure for a transfer tax, to in fact, adopt that tax. The third just says that kind of all of the property rights, rights of action, contracts, ordinances, resolutions, regulations, or legal proceedings that are currently in play with the city being a general law would continue to be the same under, being a city charter. And essentially, that the form of government is the council manager form of government that currently exists today, with the same number of five council members elected at large. The council's role would change, and something that's required under state law is to address the issue of council compensation, and that would stay the same as exists under general law, with restraints in terms of what that can be according to the state. So the recommended city charter ballot question is, again, something that has been brought to the council before. And essentially, what would be placed on the ballot is the following. To enhance local control over funding essential city services, shall the city of Emeryville charter be adopted to establish Emeryville as a charter city with the ability to adopt a local real property transfer tax, subject to voter approval? The city council's powers otherwise remain unchanged and are limited by state general law, and any other powers as a charter city would have to be approved by the voters. So this would be placed on the ballot. In addition, there would be a full text of the proposed charter included in the sample ballot that goes to all the voters. So in addition, council directed staff to take the steps for the council to consider tonight placing a real property transfer tax on the ballot. As mentioned before, only charter cities can consider a transfer tax, and so these two are really coupled. So if, for example, the city charter passed, but the real transfer tax did not, the city would become a city, a charter city, but nothing would have changed, with the possibility of future amendments, you know, by initiative or by council going to the voters. However, if the transfer tax passed, but for some reason the city council taxed, city council, the charter measure did not, in fact, the transfer tax would not either, because the council would not have the authority to impose the tax as a general law city. And if you look at the resolution regarding the transfer tax, there was a where, there was a slight amendment that was provided to you that made that clear.
It's the, it's on the last page, it's on the fourth page of that resolution that is, puts this measure to the voters, and it's the very first, first, further resolved on the last page of that resolution. on the last page of that resolution.
That just clarifies that, you know, that it would not essentially take effect if the council does not, if the city is not, does not become a charter city. So, the proposed real property transfer tax would, is proposed to be, if approved by the voters, to be $12 per $1,000 of property sale value imposed as a one-time tax at the time of sale. And this tax may be split between the buyer and the seller. There is an exemption for residents sold under the city's affordable housing program, and that those, those are those that are restricted by the ownership, 30-year ownership covenants that set aside these units for persons or families of low or moderate income. And the proposed effective date is 10 days after the election is certified by the city council, or January 1st, 2015, whichever is later. Which is like, and in the past, the, whoops, sorry. Whoops. Sorry about that. In the past, the council tends to be able to certify the elections in the first meeting of December. So this is not as clear as I would like, but to give us a comparison of what the rate would be for some perhaps typical property sales, that $12 per 1,000, a $30,000 property would pay at the time of sale, the one-time tax of $3,600. $10 million property, more likely a commercial property in Emeryville, rather than a residential property, would pay $120,000 and-
$12,000.
Sorry, 12, sorry, 12-
A million dollar property, right?
A million, no, I was going, well, I was going jumping to the $10 million, but right, a $1 million property would pay $12,000, a $10 million property would pay $120,000, and a $100 million property would pay $1.2 million, one-time monthly. To look at where the proposed rate of $12 is compared to other charter cities, and every charter city in Alameda County has a local property transfer tax, it put us lower than our surrounding towns of Berkeley and Oakland, in the same as Alameda. So just to get a sense of the difference, currently, under general law, the only property transfer tax that is imposed is through the state and the county, with the county receiving half of those proceeds. And the tax is $1.10 cents per $1,000, and the city receives 55 cents of that, while the county receives the other 55 cents of that. And as I said, currently, we do not have a local property tax. So to give you some sense of some fairly recent properties, with for example, the fairly recent transaction when Novartis sold some of its properties, the city received a bit less than $62,000 under the current state-county imposed transfer tax. If in fact, the, the proposed $12 per 1,000 rate had been in place, the city would have gained more than $1.35 million. And you can see kind of the difference. Perhaps one of the biggest differences is when the tower sold a couple of years ago, that the city received about $75,000, with the council receiving $75,000. And if the $12 per 1,000 sale value had been in place, the city would have, have, have done quite a bit more. So, just some projected revenue comparisons, and I did a range of years, so I will just give you a sense of the lowest and the highest year. So current, so what the city received at getting that 55 cents per 1,000, in 2010, which was kind of the height of the, of the property sale kind of bust or low, reductions, the city received just under $39,000 from the sale of those transactions. With the proposed local transfer tax, that would have been almost $850,000. And in a year where there was particularly a lot of commercial activity, 2011 is the year that the tower sold, rather than $616,000, the city would have received almost $13.5 million. For 2014, the current year, we have data through May 2014, currently the city, through May 2014, the city was able to collect $136,000 if the property transfer tax had been in place, it would have been almost $3 million. And these are funds that are, that other city, that the other, that, you know, that the local property transfer tax is something that the other, of course, charter cities have. So, if the council decides to do the same set of measures, or at least the first measure to place it on the ballot, this is the recommended property transfer ballot question. To ensure funding to maintain essential city services, such as police, fire, and emergency service protection, street sewer and storm drain maintenance, park and open space development, and maintenance bike and pedestrian safety, childcare and programs for youth and seniors, shall the city of Emeryville adopt a real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville. And there would be, in addition to the full text of the proposed property transfer tax ordinance, also a summary, in addition to the impartial city attorney analysis, if the council so directs the city attorney to prepare one. So, assuming that the city council goes ahead and moves to place both of the proposed measures on the ballot, the next step would be tomorrow, it's required by the state to be the next day after this happens, there'd be a public notice regarding, a public notice regarding the ballot argument and rebuttal argument, assuming that the council passes those resolutions to make that part of the ballot, sample ballot. August 8th is the last date that ballot measures can be submitted to the register of voters, and some of that has to be done in person. So, not a lot, it's, will be, we've done that before, so we can do it again. If the council decides that there shall be ballot arguments included in the sample ballot for the voters to, to consider, the resolution, the draft resolution in front of you sets that time is August 13th, or a week after the ballot measure is taken to the register of voters. And the public notice, I should say, regarding the argument and rebuttal argument would be posted on our three city bulletin boards, as well as we will put it on our city homepage. If the council decides to also have rebuttal arguments as part of the sample ballot, that due date would be August 20th, given seven days after the ballot arguments to be submitted for rebuttal, for any authors of rebuttals to be able to view the ballot arguments and submit a rebuttal. And then, August 25th is the absolute last day that ballot arguments and/or rebuttal arguments can be submitted to the register of voters, so they could be included. City Clerk's office plans to do that on Friday, the 22nd, just to make sure that if there's any last-minute issues, that we've got some time to make sure that everything is correct. Then also, once before Election Day, the city has to publish a public notice regarding the measures that were placed on the ballot. We tend to do that in September, so it's done. And then, of course, November 4th is Election Day. So that ends the presentation, and as I said, there are really eight resolutions for each of the measures, and so I will run back to my desk and-
Get ready.
-try to hear what the motions, if any, and the vote is regarding any of those proposed resolutions.
Okay.
Whoever has any questions?
I have a quick clarifying question, actually, and it's on the real property transfer tax ballot question. And my question, or my comment is that it doesn't include the rate itself on the question. And I'm just curious why that is, I was surprised to see that it doesn't say how much it would be.
It's included in both the, of the ordinance summary, proposed ordinance summary, and of course, the full text of the tax measure, of the tax, of the proposed tax ordinance that will also be included in the sample ballot and sent to all the voters.
Is anyone else surprised that the rate's not in the question?
I guess I am too, I think it'd be probably a good idea if we put the rate in there.
No. I don't know if it's a good idea, I just was surprised.
It's not necessary, is it?
Yeah, and I think part of the reason, this was the exact question that we polled, and we didn't include the rate in the poll, because at the time, we were looking at, you know, different rates and different tiers and different exemptions, so we just pulled this language here and our, the recommendation that, of the pollster when they came here was to just leave it as is.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure that we were eyes wide open. I have one other clarifying question, which has to do actually with Exhibit A, which is the text of the ordinance, sorry, of the code itself, around the real property transfer tax. And it's on, in our packet, it's on page 628, I believe. It talks about the effective date, I guess it's section-
All right.
What section is it?
Section 2.
Section 2, thank you. And I, I was confused when I read it, because it says the later of these two, and I thought we had intended it to be the earlier of those two. Can someone answer that for me?
Well, it, it has to be the later of, of those.
Of the what?
It has to be the, because you were, we were talking about, at the time, you know, if the, if the, the results came to the council on December 2nd, then it becomes effective 10 days thereafter, so it's December 12th. And then we were talking about just having a, sort of a hard and fast date of January 1.
The public to understand, yeah.
The, it has to read as the later of, in case you actually don't get your results until, let's say you don't get your results until January, granted, that's probably not going to happen. So you would have an ordinance that says it's going to, if you said earlier, it'd be January 1, 2015.
And it hasn't yet taken-
And, and you're now going earlier than what's even allowed by the Elections Code.
Oh, I see.
So this is, it's saying the later of, so with the idea that we had actually, probably will get the results, to have you certify them on December 2nd, if that's the correct date, I'm recalling.
Yeah. Well, that wasn't my intention, I guess.
True.
So I don't know if we want to change that date from January 1st to something earlier?
Or, well, the, you have to come, at least comply with the Elections Code, which says, you know, 10 days after you actually certify the results.
Right, but if we're doing later, we could do December 10, or as provided by the California Elections Code section, so that-
I thought we were just going to say something general like that, like as provided by the Elections Code.
Well, some of us wanted an actual date, because most people don't know what is provided by the California Elections Code, section 9217, and I thought it was helpful to have an actual date, so that people can predict, you know, there's certainty that it will, but there's still not certainty, it sounds like, because we have to abide by the-
Yeah, because we just, I mean, I, I think we all suspect that we would actually get the results on December 2nd, but if that's the case, the way this currently reads, it wouldn't go into effect until January 1.
Won't take effect until January 1. Okay. Well, that wasn't my intention, so I just want to put that out for the council and see if we want to do something-
I thought we settled on the earlier.
Well, that's what we thought, but it makes sense that you couldn't do it on January 1st if it still hadn't been certified.
Right.
It's okay the way it is.
Okay. Okay, it's a minor detail, it's just as different than what I think we anticipated.
Can we hear from the public? Anyone want to comment on this item? Please come forward.
Okay, there's something in here that I think is wrong, and you need to fix it. The measure to be submitted to the voters, and this is the, the second, the second wording, to ensure funding to maintain essential city services such as fireplace, that wording, that text, at the very bottom out, there's something that's incorrect, and it's, could be problematic legally, I think. Okay, dot, 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 real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville, question mark. I believe that should say, dot, 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 real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and/or sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville, question mark. It should say and/or, because there's no, that's a private agreement between the buyer and the seller. They, they could have a private, private agreement where the seller pays all of it, or the buyer pays all of it, or they split it 50/50, or they split it 75/25, so that's not germane, and the way it sounds like now, it must be paid by, the buyers and the sellers have to at least kick in some, and it's sort of ambiguous. I think it should just say and/or, I think you should put that language in, I think you should ask the city attorney about that and put that language in there. I don't know how that could be legally problematic, but I think it's more, it's more clear. Once again, I'll say I think we should be charging what our neighbors charge, $15 per thousand, thousand, per $1,000, 1,000 square feet, because that's what our neighbors get. And, and this, this notion that we should always charge less than our neighbors is wrong, I think, I think we should just charge what the market will bear, that's the only rational metric, and this, what you're doing is you're applying a different logic, or different metric that has a dubious logic, it's, that we always have to charge less, and it's sort of a race to the bottom, and sort of, first off, it's, it's bad regionally, it, it makes Berkeley and Oakland presumably, so they're going to lose business at our expense. I mean, I mean, we'll gain at their expense, I should say. And I just, I don't, I think we should be thinking more regionally, I just think we should charge what the market will bear, and I think clearly, the market will bear 15, since that's what our two next-door neighbors that actually touch us get. Now, I wanted to talk about something different altogether, the schools, the agreement that the schools has with Turner, there's a thing called the Community Benefits Agreement, I'm changing the subject now, Community Benefits Agreement, that the schools have with Turner. That is not a Community Benefits Agreement. If you look it up in the dictionary, Community Benefits Agreement is between the community and the developer, with the government out of the picture. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because it cheapens, it's, it's a co-opting of this term, and I, I don't, I don't appreciate that, I think that Community Benefits have real value, and this is a co-opting and a devaluing of the idea of a Community Benefits Agreement, and it, plus it gives phony, I think, credibility to the school district, it makes it seem as if the project is more, has more credibility than it really does have. It's, it's sort of glomming on to the idea of CBAs, and I don't appreciate it, I don't think we should be, it should be called a CBA, because strictly defined, it is not a CBA. Is that my time?
That's your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this item? Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andrei Carpio, and I look at the tax, transfer tax, and I do not know if there is any exception attached to it, or if any exception has been amended to it, it's not been clear to me. And also, I'm questioning the 1.2%, is it from the actuary or who is the arbitrer? Who decided that? I mean, do we have to have 12%? Some, I mean, do we have to have 1.2%? I don't know what was the basis for that, everybody needs money, I'm sure, but I was wondering if, if some, the older citizen will not be in a bind when they want to transfer taxes, because of course, they haven't made any profit on it since all those years that they have had their property, and they have been keeping taxes, and all of a sudden, they, they sell it, and they may not be able to have the best price of it, and still they have to have a tax to be paid. And there is several questions about that, because I'm being skeptical that how the 1.2% has been arrived, and I really like to see a detail of the reasoning behind it. Thank you.
It's 12%, Mr. Carpio.
It's actually .12, .0- It's actually .12, .012%, just so that it's...
For $1,000.
For $1,000, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Asher and council members. I'm Bob Cantor with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. We, as I mentioned previously, we had a Chamber Board of Directors meeting yesterday, and we had a presentation and discussion on both of these issues. And I think you'll be glad to know that our Chamber Board, we also had a little task force that reviewed it, and our Chamber Board of Directors voted unanimously to endorse both the city charter measure and the real estate transfer tax measure. That's official, so you can use the Chamber of Commerce's name in any argument for. I don't, we will have a formal statement on both. They don't have it yet, because our meeting was just yesterday, I haven't written it. But we will have a formal statement in support, and we'll post it on our website, our Facebook page. But it is now an official position of the chamber, and we support both. And while it's not on the agenda for tonight, but just as a point of interest, Vice Mayor Atkins came to our meeting as well, made an excellent presentation on the proposed Alameda County sales tax, both extension and increase measure. And you'll be glad to know that, at least in part because of a very persuasive presentation, the Chamber Board also voted unanimously to support that. It's prospectively measure BB. I don't think that's official yet, but we voted to support that as well. So we will be working to, to support that and, and publicize that. And we'll take some things to our pack to see about funding. That'll go to our Political Action Committee. But we are on board in all three. These two measures, plus Measure BB.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Questions from council?
I'd move the four city charter measures, but I'd like a separate vote on each resolution.
I'd second that.
Give me a second. I'm sorry?
I'm not worried about the and or.
I'd just like to ask city attorney to respond to that.
If, the most important piece is the actual ordinance itself, that is, you know, that the voters are, are voting upon. That said, I will point you to Section 3-3.704, which reads, the title is "Person on Whom Tax Imposed." Any persons who make a transfer which is subject to the tax imposed under Section 3-3.702, and any persons to whom such a transfer is made, so that's a buyer and the seller, shall be jointly and severably liable for payment of the tax imposed. So I don't think the language is necessarily in the, in the ballot question is inconsistent at all with the actual application of the tax.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for raising that concern, though, too.
Call a question.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to respond actually to another public comment, which is about exemptions and, or exceptions. And I asked staff about that as well. It was raised also by email to me in a comment. But I don't, I haven't seen other examples of senior exceptions or exemptions on property transfer taxes, and neither had staff. And I, I understand how paying a, a tax at any time can be a hardship on some folks, and yet, this is at the time of a sale of property. And so there are lots of other fees, et cetera, and how we arrived at our fee is really a regional kind of context, I would say, or that's at least my perspective on it. So we, we did consider other exceptions and different rates for different amounts, and decided to stick with the simplest possible, which was a $12 per 1,000, which is a .012% property transfer tax.
We'll call that, yeah.
So the first resolution is ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Emeryville, a measure to approve the City of Emeryville Charter at the general election to be held Tuesday, November 4th, 2014, as called by Resolution Number 1462. And that was previously done, and that was actually calling the election for the city council elections, and requesting that the County of Alameda consolidate Emeryville's election with the rest of the statewide ballot. And so my understanding, it's a motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Brinkman.
Yes.
And so Councilmember Asher, oh, sorry, Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The second resolution is optional, but it's to set priorities for filing written arguments regarding the city measure to approve the Emeryville Charter, and directs the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis to be submitted at the November 4th municipal election. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The third resolution is a resolution providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments regarding approval of the City of Emeryville Charter. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The fourth resolution regarding placing the city charter in the ballot is a resolution releasing rebuttal arguments on a city measure to approve. And this would give the council members the option of having other members, other, other, other authors, other themselves of rebuttals to any arguments placed opposing the city charter. And Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye. Move the four property transfer tax resolutions.
Okay, okay. And I just want to let you know that you did not have to say who you're releasing to it at this point, but you will have to give me those names as part of submitting the rebuttal, who you've released those names to. And you each have to individually do it.
Can I just ask, since I'm not as familiar with that, that means if we don't, for any reason, want to have our name on it, we don't have to release it to anyone either?
It's more, it, it...
It's the opportunity to release it.
It's the opportunity to list. Otherwise, it would be the city council members signing the ballot argument. If there is a argument against the city charter, then it's also the city council authoring and signing the rebuttal. What this gives the opportunity, which has happened in the past, that you may have community members that you would like to sign the rebuttal, you're still going to be, you know, in the, in the pamphlet having signed, being the primary authors of the argument, but it broadens the number of people who, you know, who are, you know, taking a position regarding the measure.
But you were not forced to do either.
You're not forced to do it.
Right, okay.
Pardon me. What do you want from the council here in terms of names of people to sign?
Well, so for example, if you choose to have Joe Smith of the community, who you feel would be a good person to sign the rebuttal argument to show...
Broad support.
Broad support. You could not sign, you would be a signer of the argument, but you would say, instead of me, Nora Davis, signing the rebuttal, I am ceding that to a specific person that would be signing it.
Well, we're on a very tight time schedule here. When do you need those names?
When you, when, the, the arguments are due August 13th, and the rebuttal arguments are due August 20th, and I would need those names when you submitted the rebuttal argument on August 20th.
There's a, there's an actual form that has to be filed with the city clerk, and she, the city clerk has those in her office.
Is there something that we could resolve here, as we're all sitting here? Is there anyone here who wouldn't allow their name to be on the ballot, on the rebuttal argument? Or let me do it a different way. Is there anybody here who, who would allow their name to be used? I would volunteer my name.
Yes, I would be fine with that. I think it's a little confusing, because we can't talk to each other outside of our public meetings.
How do we arrange?
So, yeah, how, how do we have that conversation? Are we allowed to have that conversation here, so that...
Why can't we do it right now? You say you would use your name. Kurt, what do you say? Jennifer, Ruth? You've got five names to pick from. Moving along.
Well, the, the issue, though, is what the actual argument says, right? If we're going to sign our names to something, it would be good to know what it says. So who authors that, et cetera? How do we arrange it?
I think usually it's a subcommittee of the council.
Yeah, but what this whole item is about is, is giving you the authority to release the ability to be, you know, the, the author of the rebuttal argument to somebody else besides yourself. So it's, you're just giving yourself that authority. You don't have to actually exercise it, so, you know, there really isn't a need to sort of engage in any sort of discussion about whether you're going to release it or not right now. It's up to you to decide at some point.
But how can we have that conversation? We're not allowed to have those conversations.
We're never allowed to talk.
You're voting right now to give yourself individually that authority to do it. You don't need to have a, necessarily a conversation about whether you're going to release.
Well, maybe after we're done with this, could I ask publicly how we otherwise orchestrate ballot arguments?
And who specifically is going to write this rebuttal argument?
That's, that's part of it, yeah.
City manager?
No, she, no, she can't. Usually it's two members of the city council who form a subcommittee.
You're a wordsmith. You're good.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm going to be on vacation, so.
How about Ruth and Jennifer as a subcommittee?
There's one of two ways that it's usually done. One is a subcommittee of, the council is formed, and they have the authority to both draft the, the, draft the argument and rebuttals, and to seek others in the community, if they see fit, to actually put their names to the rebuttal, so you have both council members, as well as other members of the community, listed on the sample ballot. The other way of doing it, which is with or without a subcommittee of the council, that you have a special meeting, and you, you know, review it together.
Right, as a committee.
And approve it together.
I like the idea of a subcommittee. Everybody else in favor of that?
I am.
Well, so I would respectfully decline and ask that the mayor who's, who put forth the charter city idea, and also the property transfer tax, be included on that subcommittee, if she so chooses.
You'd be fine with that, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're done here.
Well, we just need to vote on 6.222.
Transfer tax. Now the transfer tax. It is, my understanding is that was also moved by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Brinkman, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the same set of resolutions. The first is to place the transfer tax ordinance at the general election. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The second resolution regarding the transfer tax, proposed transfer tax ordinance, is setting priorities for filing arguments, and also directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember We, oh, sorry, West. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
The third is providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments regarding the real property transfer tax ordinance. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
And the last is the resolution releasing rebuttal arguments regarding, regarding the real property transfer tax ordinance. Councilmember Da, uh, Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to Item 7, Planning Director's Report on Planning Commission Actions.
All right, the planning commission held their regular meeting on July 24th, and this is my report to you on what they did at that meeting. The appeal period is 15 days after the date of that meeting, which I believe is tomorrow, or, I'm sorry, this coming Friday, the 8th. They had the election of officers for the next year. They elected Sean Moss as chair and Kyrie Tan as vice chair. They considered the East Bay Bridge facade improvements. Oh, I should note that Commissioner Coomerly had an excused absence from the meeting. They, they approved the East Bay Bridge facade improvements on a five-to-one vote with Commissioner Moss, or now Chair Moss, voting no. On the Park on Powell sign, there were two items related to the Park on Powell, formerly known as Parkside Apartments, signage, and Commissioner Gunkel was recused on both of those, because he owns his home within 500 feet. The master sign program was approved on a five-to-nothing vote, and the Park on Powell identif, project identification signage was approved on a four-to-one vote, with Commissioner Donaldson voting no. They also held a study session on the Christie Avenue Park redesign and expansion, and they made a number of good comments. The main takeaway that I got from that was that they want to see a real play structure in the park, and not berms and rocks for kids to climb on. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
I, I just want to comment on the, the name change from Paper Mill to Parkside to Park on Powell. And I have to say, when I, I first looked at this, I had no idea what it was about. And how, how, there's another project, the intersection, that has been renamed, and M. I heard about, or Emmy, I think. And I was like, I've never heard of that project in Emeryville. How could you not know that, you know, Councilmember West? So I'm just curious how we become aware of these things, except by random exposure. Is there any, by reading the progress reports, are the name changes in there as well?
They are. You know, staff often scratches our heads and say we wish we had veto power, or at least some say over what they named these projects. Actually, we did have a little bit of that with the Park on Powell project. They initially were going to call it 1333 Powell, which is problematic, because the bill, there's actually three buildings, and they have four different addresses, and the fire department thought that would be confusing. So they essentially vetoed that, and that's how it ended up being Park on Powell. But ordinarily, we have no, no say. What generally happens is about halfway through the construction of a major project, especially a residential one, the marketing people get involved, and then they give the project a different name than it ever had before. So that's when you...
That's what we're seeing, okay.
That's when you can expect a new name, is when the project is about halfway constructed.
I'm just glad they used a C. Instead of a K, or people would be looking for the intersection of Park and Powell.
Or, or they would be looking...
That C is really important.
Or they'd be looking for the Park on Powell, or they'd be looking for someplace to Park on Powell.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I did want to say, if, if we're done with that item, okay. I meant to do this at the top of the meeting, but it seems to have fallen off the agenda. I wanted to introduce our new finance director, Maria Oberg, who is here on her second day.
All right.
And she comes to us from the City of San Jose, where she was most recently the treasury manager. We are extremely excited to have her here. I am personally very, very happy to have her here, after having to take a bond refunding call while I was at Legoland with my children. So Maria is here. She's in the first floor office, and please welcome her, and she'll be at the next council meeting in September.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I wanted to add one thing. I know many of us went around to the different events for National Night Out last night, and I just want to thank staff and the police, fire personnel who, who were present. I, myself, made it to two parties. I understand Nora is probably our record holder here, made it to all of them.
Great parties.
Great parties, yeah.
Financial services did a really good job.
And I, I'm really, I'm really glad that we had different destinations, several of them this year. I, I understand some of them may have been lightly attended, but I think if we do it year to year, it'll become more predictable for people. And it's just really nice and convenient to go out and, and meet your neighbors. So thank you again to staff for your hard work on that. I'd like to report, although Bob Cantor kind of beat me to it, that, but I, I'll just say how pleased I am that the chamber is endorsing the transportation sales tax measure this year. They did not two years ago. So that represents a real movement on their part, and, and understanding that this is going to be the biggest jobs bill in Alameda County for the next 30 years. So there's many good reasons to support it, not the least of which is also the expenditures and where they're going. So I just, I wanted to thank the chambers. He left, but, for their, for their support. Thank you.
Okay, with that, anyone else? Meetings, no?
Move to adjourn.
All right.
Get out of here.
Wow. A good rest of your vacation, everyone.